I'll go first, yep. My name's Nishad Dada. I'm a local activist and I've been in the movement spaces in New Brunswick since the days of Occupy, but I really cut my teeth on community organizing during the fight to save the Lincoln Annex School, which is where I first got acquainted with how strong Speaker Linda is over here. And it's also where I got connected more closely with Charlie. I was involved in his latest mayoral campaign. And pretty soon after Hai Jang Shin infiltrated our schools earlier this year, I contacted Charlie and I started coming to these, this organization's meetings, where I met Yanni and formerly met Linda, and we decided to form our team. My primary focus in this race is to empower working-class and immigrant families. I am the first South Asian candidate to run for this seat, I believe. And I think the best way to empower the working class and to empower immigrants in this city is to get my running mates elected.
Okay. If one of you would like to translate for Spanish speakers, that might be helpful.
Sure. Nishad acaba de hablar sobre su historial como él ha trabajado con la comunidad desde la situación con la construcción de desconstrucción de Lincoln Annex. Y ahí fue que conoció a Linda y este supo de cómo poder ayudar más a la comunidad. Él es residente también de New Brunswick. Es primero en aplicar para una posición con su... Él se enfoca mucho en ayudar a los inmigrantes, ya que él es también es asiático, entonces eso lo ayuda a él como saber el historial de un inmigrante y poder ayudar a más gente.
Okay, my name is Linda Stork. And I have lived in New Brunswick for a very long time. Sometimes it feels like I was born here, but I was not. I've been here almost fifty years. And I had my children here. They went to the schools here. I worked in the schools here, even before I had them and after they were in the schools. I worked over thirty years in our public schools. I was a bilingual kindergarten teacher. So I have seen firsthand from both sides, from the side of a parent, from the side of a staff member, and from the side of a community member. It can be very frustrating to see. So, yo tengo muchos años aquí en New Brunswick. A veces siento que nací aquí, pero no, no es cierto. Pero ya tengo casi cincuenta años de estar aquí. Aquí compré mi casa, tuve a mis hijos. Ellos asistieron a las escuelas de New Brunswick. Y yo trabaje, trabajé en las escuelas públicas más de treinta años en el programa de Kinder Lingüe. Entonces he visto de muchos puntos de, puntos de vista de este miembro, miembros de la comunidad, trabajadoras por la junta de educación y también como mamá. He visto los asuntos de, de, de las escuelas. Siempre yo decía cuando yo trabajaba en las, en las escuelas que un día yo voy a poder estar en esa junta y voy a poder hacer mejores decisiones. Porque cuando uno trabaja por ellos, no es, no me querían escuchar. So I always wanted, when I was always working for them so many years, I always said, "One day I'll be able to get on that board and make better decisions." Because they don't even listen when you work for them. You know, I would go to say something at the Board of Ed, even as a parent. No. And the next day, the principal would call me to the office, like I did something wrong. El próximo día cuando yo hablaba en la junta de educación como miembro de la comunidad, como mamá, que mis hijos estaban en las escuelas y al otro día el director de la escuela me llamaba, le llamaba que fuera a su oficina para regañarme, como si hubiera hecho algo malo. No. So, lo que, lo que veo ahora lo más fundamental es la seguridad en las escuelas. Porque esas son las necesidades, todas las otras necesidades de los niños están basadas en la seguridad. Si no tenemos seguridad, no tenemos nada. I feel like the security issues right now are the most important thing to address. Because if we don't have security, that's like the needs of the students that everything else is based on. Students need to feel secure. Parents need to feel secure sending them to school. And everything else is built on that. If we don't have security, we don't have anything. But I will also be advocating for more transparency. La transparencia. En, en los otros pueblos siempre graban las reuniones, las ponen en YouTube o, o en donde el público puede ver. Porque no es conveniente siempre asistir a la reunión y menos con niños. So I'm, I'll be also advocating for transparency to, they should be recording the meetings like other towns do. The only reason we get to see it is because Charlie records it. They should be recording it if they really wanted people to be able to see. It's not always convenient to go to them, and especially with little kids. Yeah, it's not. So people should be able to, to see the meetings. And it's also very disturbing to me that we have such a high dropout rate. The last statistics I saw was, you know, twenty-five percent of the kids are leaving before they graduate from high school. And that is not acceptable. That's just not acceptable. We need to think outside of the box and do some, do some different kinds of things. So también este me preocupo mucho por, por la cantidad de muchachos que no se gradúan. Son como veinticinco por ciento que no terminan su high school. Y eso no es aceptable. A veces se finian que no hay problemas aquí, pero sí tenemos graves problemas. Tanto de seguridad de, de, de la cantidad de, de muchachos que no se gradúan. Y a veces de los que se gradúan no siempre tienen las destrezas que necesitan para ser exitosos en su vida. Yeah. Estas son las cosas donde me quiero enfocar. Yo creo que ella habla mucho. Oh, did I say the last part in English?
Yes.
I didn't.
She got my vote.
Mi nombre es Yanni Mendez Homero. My name is Yanni Mendez. And I am a business owner here in New Brunswick, New Jersey. And I'm a mother to a student in, in the high school. And my focus in being part of this great team is that I get to look at the point of view of moms like myself who are worried about their children's safety. Because our kids spend most of the time in school. So I worry about the student-to-teacher ratio. Because our population is growing every year, which is great. But then we also have to keep up the ratio based on academics. And I think being a mom allows me to share, being part of the Board of Ed, the concerns of every mother out there. And then being a business owner gives me the free, freedom to actually be part of this. On most, I could use up most of the time in, in these meetings. And then help also give my opinion and put in my, my full time, right? Because I'm able to juggle my own schedule. And also being a Latina female and being able to have a word and say in this, especially in Mexican-American culture. I think like myself, as you said, Nishad, I'm the first Mexican-American running to be part of the Board of Ed. They're my, I'm not too sure. But also being a student, because I, Linda was my teacher. So being a student, I could speak.
I'm really old.
I could say she was a great teacher and now a great advocate. So I look up to her as an, as an example of how to get back to my community and make a better future for Nishad's future children growing up here in New Brunswick. And I think we will be great working together as a team.
Yep, I want to add that also Linda was a parent of children who went through the New Brunswick school system. She taught here for thirty years. Yanni's children are currently in New Brunswick schools. And, you know, my story in America starts here in New Brunswick. My father came here in nineteen ninety-one from India. And it's always been my goal that when I finally settle down and get married and buy a house, which is something I have done within the last year or so, that we have children here in New Brunswick and that we stay here in New Brunswick and make sure that our community gets stronger. And so we represent the concerns and the needs of past, present, and future parents of children who go to New Brunswick schools.
You said the last part of yours is in Spanish. Like the whole second half.
Lo que le estaba explicando en inglés fue que siendo dueña de un propio negocio, tengo el tiempo libre para poder enfocarme en problemas que nuestras escuelas están teniendo, nuestros estudiantes. Ha habido, Linda fue mi maestra hace, hace pocos años. Entonces yo puedo hablar sobre la parte estudiantil, cómo se siente el estudiante en las escuelas de New Brunswick. Como madre de estudiantes en New Brunswick también puedo, poder este llevar las, las quejas, dudas que tenemos como padres hispanos a estos tipos de, de reuniones que tienen el sistema de educación. Entonces estoy de acuerdo con todo lo que ellos están, estamos de acuerdo como equipo en cómo debemos de trabajar con estudiantes y que la, lo primero son los estudiantes. Y por eso nuestro título es estudiantes primero.
All right. Thank you to all of our candidates for your statements. Now we'll turn it to the public questions. So anyone can ask a question of any individual or, you know, the whole team of candidates. I'm a big fan of not being more formal than what's necessary. I think that we have a nice respectful group, so feel free to just state your question. And if we, if we all jump at once, then I'll, I'll step in to moderate. But feel welcome to just ask a question as you feel.
The first thing I, I, I will ask, so, so we can remember everyone's name. Is it a way that we can get on piece of paper with your, with your name? So we know, like I said, due to where we haven't received the flyers yet. So we know like which one to vote for? I would say that would be a good idea if you don't mind.
Column B.
We're gonna have flyers out too.
Well, and I'm just saying, due to where, like I said, I know your name. I met you before, I'm just saying I dotted, dashing a few of the names. But, so, okay, you're saying column, just all, all of you are column B?
Yes, we're gonna be in the same paragraph.
Yeah, we're running under students first and B, yep.
Okay, then no need for, like I said, so I remember everyone's name, okay? Thank you, column B.
Yeah, all you gotta remember is students first.
Students first, yeah. Estamos en, estamos en la columna B. El equipo de los estudiantes primero.
Yes, if you know, I think it's good to let them know, Charlie, how many votes usually people get in these type of elections? That way they, we can get more help.
Le preguntaba a Charlie que se puede dejarle saber cuánta gente vota en New Brunswick para este tipo de elecciones, para que ustedes nos ayuden a conseguir más votos.
Yeah, so New Brunswick has had school board elections for a little over ten years now. And the winners typically get somewhere between two hundred and one thousand votes total. So a, you know, a small group of people can make a big change.
Usualmente los que llegan a ganar el partido, quienes reciben de doscientos a mil votos. Entonces eso es más o menos lo que estamos mirando, que necesitamos. Somos un equipo que van a encontrar ustedes en la columna B. Entonces si saben de gente que puede votar o que sí pueden registrarse hoy, es el último día para registrarse para las votaciones, pero que voten para columna B. Si es que ustedes no se pueden memorizar todos nuestros nombres, solo es columna B.
Students first.
Students first.
Una pregunta, y además ustedes tres son la cantidad que puede entrar o pueden entrar más?
La había, las registraciones fueron en marzo para poder ser candidato. Pero son tres personas que serían ahorita mismo. Oh, it's made up, she's asking if more than three can run, since we're running.
Yeah, it's many.
Los que usted pueden correr a las elecciones para registrarse eran en marzo. Pero estamos corriendo los tres juntos en equipo. Entonces si votan por una, votan por las tres, por los tres, perdón.
No es obligatorio, pero les estamos pidiendo que lo hagan porque todos somos, estamos en la misma.
Si hubieran podido entrar dos grupos, hubiera sido más fácil, ¿no?
Sí, solo que no queda uno, quedaba el otro.
Son tres que se tienen que reemplazar. Ajá, son tres, ajá. Por ejemplo, el año pasado yo corría yo sola y no me resultó.
Tiene razón, eso es lo que estamos haciendo ahora porque está...
Sí.
Did you have a question?
I was just gonna ask you, would you have any ideas about how to work on the safety of the kids? Do you have ideas already? Because that's a huge issue throughout the country.
It is.
And I was wondering, I know you're, you're probably on top of some, some ideas. I would love to hear them.
I mean, some of the things that have occurred to me, and I've been bringing this up consistently at the board meetings, is that they just keep, when they have certain offenses that the students commit in school, require a suspension, an out-of-school suspension. So when they give the report every month and they're saying, "Oh, one hundred and eighty-three suspensions," or, you know, "one hundred and twenty-five suspensions," first of all, that doesn't tell how many days, because sometimes they suspend kids out for two weeks. And my question is, what are you doing for these kids? How are you intervening? I think they need more like mental health services. And just putting the kids out of school, how is that helping? So the things that is automatic out-of-school suspension is fighting, drugs. Well, if you just turn kids loose in the street for two weeks, like how, how is that gonna fix the fighting? And if they have a drug problem, that's, there's no way that's helping. But they claim that they intervene, but I have heard from, which would have surprised me, because that's not the way it was before, and I've heard from people that are working there now. No, how could they intervene? The kids aren't there. So that would, I think, contribute to security if they would look at more mental health services. More, that's more for the, like the fighting, and also for the bullying. They need to address both the bullier and the bullye. So este, la señora está preguntando por la situación de seguridad, si tenemos algunas ideas de lo que pueden hacer para hacer las escuelas más seguras. Y yo, yo sí tengo unas ideas que todos, se le, le pregunto a, no todas las veces, porque solo me dan tres minutos para hablar, no tanto es mucho. Pero siempre les pregunto, y estos, estos muchachos que han suspendido, los que usan drogas, los que pelean en la escuela, ¿qué están haciendo para, para mejorar la situación de ellos? Solo ponerlo afuera, no ayuda ni ayuda a ellos, ni ayuda a la comunidad. So, y necesitan más consejeros para salud mental.
I'm wondering what kind of alternative measures you would recommend for something like replacing out-of-school suspension or in-school suspension even? Like, I guess more specifics on like what type of mental health services do you think would be beneficial? Or what type of things do you think could replace those more punitive measures in the schools?
Can I take this one?
Yeah.
One thing that we have discussed as a unit is bringing back, like, I forget what it's called, but the RU Buddy Program, which is bringing students from the School of Education here at Rutgers, a world-class learning institution that we all know is here in town. And bringing them into our schools and giving them real-world experience working with the most at-risk kids here. This is something that they used to do for a very long time, up until, I don't know what year it was, two thousand nine? Two thousand, two thousand eleven, something like that? And since then, there's been no interest from the current-serving members of the board to revive programs like that. And, you know, you can say a lot about the lack of transparency, the underhandedness of the current sitting school board members. But, you know, I think one of the biggest issues is that they're perfectly content with like business as usual, keeping their heads down and not doing any work. And the three of us, you know, we may be in the minority even if we win, but we're willing to try anything. And we're willing to try new approaches that the current sitting members are not.
Can I translate the first part?
Lo que estaba diciendo Nishad es que la pregunta fue qué ideas tenemos nosotros como para ayudar, para que, a lugar de suspender al estudiante, qué se le debería de dar. Entonces hace muchos años había un proyecto que Rutgers entraba a las escuelas para ayudar, para darle un tipo de ejemplo o guía al estudiante. Como estudiante de Rutgers, tenemos a esa escuela muy cerca a nosotros y podemos recibir ayuda de ellos para nuestros estudiantes que están teniendo problemas como mentores.
Y también cuando dan el pretexto que no pueden, era porque este dicen que no pueden conseguir los trabajadores de salud mental, terapeutas y consejeros. Que, que, que no pueden conseguirlos, pues tendrán que pagar más o tendrán que buscar por agencia, porque hay agencias. Mi hija trabaja en eso y ella trabaja por agencias. Y la agencia contrata con las escuelas donde están faltando consejeros y los mandan. Oh, I'm sorry. So, so, and when they say they can't fill all their mental health positions, they give the excuse, "Oh, you know, there's a shortage. We can't seem to fill all these positions, it's very hard." And, well, you know, you might have to pay more. Or you might have to contract with an agency, like they do when they need more nurses. Because there's also a shortage of nurses. My daughter works for one, an agency like that. And they go, they, they contract with schools where they need more mental health workers than they have. And so they contract with the agency to send them.
Can I speak?
Yes. Well, one thing I would like to, like, I like where it was brought up, due to where with the bullying and mental health, due to where, I, due to where, I just have to say sad to say, I just went through this, due to where, with the situation where I don't think the school takes it seriously, due to where, once sometimes something does happen, due to where how the children may be scared to, to speak up to certain things, like I said, sad to say. My son was just stabbed by a gang of group members. And the other boy was stabbed in the chest, he was stabbed in the leg, on George Street, due to where it was an issue with getting, with my son going back to school, due to where, like I said, sometimes the kids don't speak up to their parents. But wow, did the school want to listen, due to where, how I kept asking questions. I'm like, wow, would you please give him a little time? Due to where, wow, what if he sees, sees something, you know how something can trigger you? You, what, something triggers you, due to where, and I say this, they need, need, it's too many fights at New Brunswick High School. And like I said, due to where, at least when I went back to high school, due to where if you had a problem at home or in school, it was someone you were able to talk to. And honestly, with a lot of fights and bullying that's going on at New Brunswick High School, I say that's one number-one thing that they really do need. Due to where, like I said, sometimes the kids are scared to speak up to parents or police. And please, that's one thing I'm surely looking into, due to where, I will be speaking at City Council tomorrow because I'm not happy with the Board of Education or the Police Department. But like I say, please, that's one thing I will ask you to, to look into. Like, wow, like it doesn't have to be mental or just, or just someone that works in that department to speak up, to speak, speak up to kids regards to bullying after. I'm pretty sure all of you saw what happened to the young lady who were being bullied, how she committed suicide. She was, this wasn't in New Jersey, but still was very heartbreaking after being bullied so many times, where how it's not like you can say, wow, we, we used to ignore this, but then if you ignore someone so many times, they'll continue doing it. So that's one thing I, I'm glad somebody did bring it up and thank you. I hope that you will look into it and then also speak at the Board of Education meeting, due to where I haven't been because they disrespect me so many times. But like I said, please, that's one thing I would appreciate, thank you.
Oh, and Daniel, do you want, do you want one of us to translate?
You can, you can translate it, due to where...
So ella, ella lo que está diciendo que, que parece que las escuelas no muchas veces no toman muy en serio esas acusaciones de bullying, eh, eh, como no, no tratan los asuntos, lo ignoran. Ese puede tener graves consecuencias. ¿Qué más dijo?
Que sí, somos elegidos que, eso punto del bullying, que hace años ella recuerda cuando ella era estudiante, que había siempre una consejera, porque a veces las cosas que el estudiante no puede contarle a los papás, va a la escuela y quizás se lo puede, o la policía. Pero al menos hay alguien seguro en las escuelas donde ellos confían. Y ella tuvo una situación con su hijo y que no le gustaría que más estudiantes pasaran, especialmente de la joven que se suicidó por el bullying. Ella le gustaría que nosotros, si somos elegidos, trabajamos en equipo a ayudar más en ese, en bullying.
Yeah, question. So with the high school, there's a lot of problems when it comes to drugs and vaping. That happens a lot in the school, like in school property, whether that is in the hallways, in the bathrooms. Really, it mostly happens in the bathroom, and it's a lot. I, I had, I witnessed tons, tons of times of going inside. It's super foggy and people coughing. You know, I, I probably got, I probably got infected too, because it's just so much. I'm just trying to mind my business, you know? So I'm just, I'm, I want to ask you, what, what approach would you take to combat this vaping epidemic? It's happening, not just in the school, but statewide and countrywide as well. Like, so what's your plan on that?
Can I help you with that? I think I, I think we spoke about that too, right? So they do drug tests, right, in school? What I was telling Linda and Nishad is...
Excuse me? His question may be in Spanish.
Okay. Lo que estaba preguntando el estudiante es que le preocupa mucho de que en la high school fuman mucho. Al punto de que cuando él entra al baño, hasta él siente que a lo mejor él no es el que está fumando, pero él ya está inhalando todo ese humo. Entonces para estudiantes que no fuman, eso es muy dañino, al igual que el estudiante que está fumando. Entonces cómo es que nosotros podemos ayudar en eso? Porque es algo no solo con nuestras escuelas, es, es tal, es, es en todo el país.
Entonces, what I was telling my team is that something we need to also be cleared on is if our students are getting drug tested, if they're being sent to the nurse to get drug tested, we as parents should have more transparency of what is the ratio of these students, right? Because that way I am aware that this is going on. Because if we don't have a student come out and talk and, you know, this is going on, my daughter's in high school, right? But if not all students will come up to their parents, say, "Hey, I'm being bothered by this." So bringing more family, community involvement would, I think, help short these kind of problems that we have in schools, because, like family events, family nights, especially in the high school. But besides that, just... Uh, but besides that, just having more clearance on, or transparency, I may say, on how many drug tests are being done in the high school, right?
In the middle school.
And the middle school. That way us as parents are alert that it's growing monthly, is it decreasing every month, and what can we do as parents, right? Uh, I think, um, that's something we talk about all the time.
Yeah, and another thing is.
We, we left her translate for six hours, didn't we?
Uh, lo que estábamos, cuando, cuando hablamos sobre lo de fumar, eh, las escuelas usualmente cuando ven que ha, un niño está drogado, o un estudiante está drogado, se mandan a la enfermería. Y de ahí tienen que dejarles saber al padre. Entonces, uh, en muchos casos me parece que no se le está dejando saber el padre, o ya no se le está mandando el estudiante a la enfermería. Entonces nosotros queremos con más transparencia sobre cuántos estudiantes están fumando, para nosotros saber eh, los números de estudiantes que están fumando, para como padres también poder ayudarlos. Y hacer más eventos donde podemos involucrar los padres y los estudiantes. Para así poder ser una comunidad donde podemos hablar sobre estos temas y ahora orientarnos como padres, como po- poder ayudar a nuestros hijos.
Uh, un comentario, bueno, yo espero que, que ganen y puedan ayudar a nosotros como padres con nuestros hijos, porque no solamente en la minúscula. Empiezan desde grado cuatro, cinco, en los baños a hacer eso, a veces son niñas. Entonces, yo pienso que, ay, no es tanto como, como puedo decir. Si es por la pandemia que dejaron tanto de, de avisar cuando un niño no va a la escuela, antes si a las nueve en punto el niño lo pasaban atendiendo y no está en la escuela, ya lo llamaban a los papás. Y ahorita puede ir una semana, dos semanas, y nunca la avisan a los padres. Entonces, ahora de eso de la, de que fuman, eh, como siempre yo and, eh, andaba ahí en varias reuniones, con varios lugares. Siempre digo yo, contra la seguridad más que nada, porque en el baño, como dijo el muchacho, eso es un desastre. Y entonces, ¿qué es lo que hace el security? Que no pasa cerca de los baños, o no haya, supuestamente hay alguien que está vigilando el baño de las niñas y el baño de los niños. ¿Y qué, qué es lo que reporta él? Nada? Porque no quiere, o a quién lo reporta, o sea, cómo ellos van a saber qué niños son los que están haciendo eso? Si no están como poniendo atención, no están prácticamente haciendo su trabajo.
Or the smoke alarms, why aren't the smoke alarms going on right?
Right?
But, um. Oh, okay, um, she was explaining how if there's security guards that are getting paid, um, aren't they smelling the smoke coming out of the bathrooms, aren't they also, um, helping by notifying the staff that this is going on? And she says that it's not just the high school, it's not just the middle school, it's also starting at fourth graders. She's heard they start smoking. So she wants better help in, you know, how can we help from the inside out by giving some advocacy to the security guards? And how to step up in these kind of situations, and what can be done?
It's a very big issue. Um, I didn't work in New Brunswick High School, but I worked in San Francisco High School. Very similar situation. Drug testing doesn't do vaping. You don't test for vaping. Vaping is rampant in almost every high school, I think. It's a very big issue. And, um, security guards are overrun with things to do. And I don't, I don't know that, I don't know why they aren't responding to all of these issues. But it's a huge issue, um, in all high schools.
Uh, ella acaba de explicar que ella ha sido enfermera en, en el pueblo de Cerro y que cuando les hacen los exámenes de droga a los estudiantes, cuando hacen vaping, no aparece en algunos de los exámenes de, de drogas. Pero lo que sí ella dice que es un problema muy grande, no solo en las escuelas de New Brunswick, pero es algo que sí debemos de estar precavidos.
I'm encouraged to hear that part of your plan includes greater parent or community involvement. Um, my daughter is in second grade, so we haven't had too much experience yet. But the limited experience I've had is that the school does not really welcome parent involvement. Um, and my understanding is New Brunswick Schools receives a lot of Title One funding, which is supposed to include parent involvement, and they get by with, you know, their really structured events that they offer. Uh, I'm curious, two parts, like, for those of you who are parents, has it always been that way? Um, the limited parent involvement, and the second part is if you are elected, um, what's your plan for incorporating more parent involvement?
As a, as a previous student, I went to New Brunswick School Districts, and it wasn't, it was more parent involvement. You had school nights where you had parents, volunteers, that's security, right? Um, you had, um, all these programs, like, they're great. I, I don't think that's no longer active. You had the Big Buddy, a system which was through Rutgers, which I remember the name of my Big Buddy. So, those kind of programs, I think, with ears were dropped. Or, um, like you said, there's so much funding out there. That is our question too, like, where is that?
For instance, like, parents in other districts can go in and read to the class, like, you know, but New Brunswick doesn't let you do it.
They say it's security.
Right.
La señora está preguntando que por qué tan, tan poca, eh, eh, la comunidad participa, y los papás participan en las escuelas, si, si siempre era así. Y no, antes no era así. Dicen que es cuestión de seguridad. That's what they have said to me, it's a security issue. Because it happened while I was still working, that they stopped, they stopped letting the parents come in, and then, like, if you're gonna have a parent, um, even to accompany you on a field trip, they want them to fill out all these forms and, like, fingerprint it. This guy is not, like, no, we just need some parent chaperones. Uh, yeah, and the parents used to be able to come into the classroom and, and help out, and yeah, ya no, ya, las familias ya no pueden entrar a la escuela como antes.
Sí, porque antes entraba uno a ver a los niños en donde, preside donde dormía, eh, hablar con la maestra, esperar si se para de llorar, se queda. Y yo tuve un incidente también hace algunos años de que la maestra como que si yo no le caí bien, o, y mi, mi hijo también, que siempre como que maltrataba a mi hijo. Ya, yo sí, yo hice todo lo que tenía que hacer. Porque yo creo que si no está capacitado para ser, es tener el puesto donde está, yo creo que para que está ahí. Porque viene y empuja a mi niño, un niño de prekinder, o sea, si ella sentía algo hacia mí o algo, me lo hubiera dicho a mí. Y no, o un niño.
Sure. Um, she was just explaining her incident a couple of years ago, where, um, the teacher of her child was, um, sort of pushed her cha- her child, and, um, she, you know, she spoke about, uh, uh, about it, and, um, she felt the disconnection between her as a parent and the teacher. So there is a disconnection. She does agree with the other parents, that there is a disconnection between parent involvement and, um, involvement and student, student families.
I agree with you, then. It really has changed. When I was teaching, we had a lot more parents involved. And there was, at one point when they started saying, parents couldn't come in.
Yeah.
And, um, it was a weird thing for my kids to try and go back to see their teachers, and they weren't allowed in there at elementary school anymore, because they were now prets of some sort. It's a very strange and different approach now. Very much.
And yeah, yes, I wanna get back to the s- a security, after I'm hearing, due to where about all the vaping, even though a couple of with, with, with the drugs, due to where I, like I said, I was at the board, high school about a week ago, where I went to go speak to them about security and all. I'm just, I have to say that the security or the video cameras is not working. Somebody's not doing their part, due to where, how I, I literally watch, you take each student's book bag, due to where you check that, the security guard checks their bag, then how every child goes through the, the metal detector. I'm not understanding, how are these supplies getting through, through, through? Due to where, I, I'm looking at the security on that, due to where, like I said, I don't see how all of this stuff is getting through, just like my son told me, somebody came into school with another, a, a knife la- 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 last, last week. I just don't understand, due to where either they need more sec- to upgrade the security or pu- have more police officers, I know there's one or two there, due to where, but I'm not seeing how these things are really being snuck, snuck in, due to where with the security and, and video cameras, that they don't know that something's going on.
Ella dice que cómo es posible que están entrando esa cosa para, para hacer vaping? Um, o hasta una, a una navaja, que un muchacho entró a la escuela con una navaja la semana pasada, pero cómo es posible si están chequeando a todos los estudiantes en la entrada?
Para que, disculpa, para que tienen el sistema de supuestamente que detectan, detectan todo lo que, y cómo es que.
No está funcionando.
O sea, es algo así como igual las cámaras, como ella dijo. Las tienen ahí, solo están nada más para ver lo que pasa en el momento, no graban nada, o sea, eso. Y aunque están viendo, a veces están viendo de ahí el security por la cámara que se están peleando en un pasillo, los dejan. Después ya van cuando ya los niños ya están, cada quien por su lado. Incluso en una escuela que, no quiero decir el nombre, pero ahí pasó de que una niña se entóxico, o sea, sobre dosis. Y supuestamente dijeron que se ahogó. O sea, la misma escuela está como cubriendo todo lo que está pasando.
She also, she, um, just mentioned about transparency, how she heard of a student female that was over, um, drug overdose, and, um, the school covered up as it was, uh, not related to drug usage. So she wants more transparency on that.
Así que este team sí, sí, vamos, que gane.
Está adentro, se apoyan con los estudiantes que, que les apoyen así, se van organizándose. Yo pienso que sí se pueden, además, con un pequeño cambio, se va.
Cuestión de comunicación más, ahora sí como, yo, nosotros hemos participado con el intendente. Eh, na, nosotros como decimos, en nuestro país nos quieren dar atónico el dedo. Nos dicen unas cosas y ya, algo más. Como que nos quieren como, eh, tranquilizar para que no hagamos nada, porque saben que nosotros estamos ahí. Entonces, ya sí, ahora sí que si como ustedes ahí vamos a tener un poquito más de fuerza, que decidan y, y vean y ayuden lo que realmente.
Practicamente.
Examinen los niños. Exactamente, o sea, yo lo que veo ustedes que, que aman lo que hacen, porque hay unos que solo quieren cheque y lo que pasa ahí está.
Um, esto es voluntario, so.
Yes, so, it's, um, what she explained is that, um, coming from a country where everything is, you know, not clear, not transparent, she is sort of, um, untrust, untrust these kind of, um, organizations, untrust you of these organizations. And then, um, she sees that we come with more transparency, and, um, she spoke about the money part. Um, be a part of the Board of Ed, it's voluntarily, so it's out of heart, out of our free time.
Way of love.
Yes.
The superintendent, however, is a paid employee, and that's, they were also mentioning how they have had meetings with him. Because now, they're gonna have a task force. Yeah, they're gonna have a task force on the problems in the schools. But this is, you know, the first they've really admitted that there were problems in the school, so I guess that's something, but you know, that's really his job, for him to have, to be just now making a task force, and I hope you guys are on it. Ustedes están en el task force, the superintendent. Señoras.
Sí, nos invitan supuestamente al, oh, miren, al, de pares, que vamos a ver.
Um, se llama task force, no?
Task, porque decía que iban a invitar a todos los afectados, las, las familias, las profesionales, los pastores de la comunidad y todo, decía.
That's the first time I hear about it.
He said that it was for me.
No, este, bueno, yo más que nada empecé ahí, porque como le digo, yo lo que a mí me, mi, mi inquietud, mi, mi, cómo lo puedo decir, mi lucha es la seguridad contra el bullying y todo en la escuela. Entonces, yo escucho, ay, que quieren, que, quién quiere ir para él, yo voy. Porque a mí me interesa tanto como dar mi, lo que yo siento, mi opinión, lo que es, puede que yo pasé y estoy pasando. Entonces, sí, yo, yo creo que sí, por ejemplo, el superintendent, él escucha, y yo, yo le hablo así, o sea, usted, usted tiene el poder de hacer muchas cosas, si, si lo que está pasando es porque usted no, no está haciendo bien el trabajo que tiene que hacer. Y yo sé que a veces, por eso antes, eh, no sea linda, se acuerda cuando íbamos a, de Lincoln Annex? Nos, nos acaban, cuando uno empezaba a decir las cosas, o sea, ellos no quieren escuchar sus problemas de ellos mismos, que no pueden solucionar. Oye, así ellos no quieren escuchar la verdad, la realidad, que según están trabajando, pero qué es lo que hacen? O sea, están ahí nomás porque están echándose la bolsa de dinero y no hacen su trabajo.
She's saying that, that, like, that is their job, that they haven't been doing, going all the way back to Lincoln Annex, when we would insist on saying the truth. They just took us out, you know, took us out of there and then did what they were gonna do, anyway. Um, yeah, they, um, and she said she's gonna insist and, and keep on going, that they, that they have to listen to us.
I just wanted to ask for clarification, when you brought up the Rutgers Buddies Program prior, was that program intended as a replacement for, like, student in-school suspensions or detentions? Or is that a preventative program just intended for mentorship?
Just for mentorship, from what I know, and your parents just had to sign you up for it.
Uh, and I just wanna add that, I think, like, in meeting, the unique challenges that come from the state of education post-COVID lockdowns, it's more than just having the kids in the classrooms themselves and, uh, suspending the kids when they mess up, or having more police in the schools themselves. We need to backfill all of these support positions that no one has even thought about, failing for two years. And we need to, sort of, all these programs involve the parents and the community. You know, that's, this is a whole ecosystem that's built up for years and years and years and years. And all it took was two years to make them all go away. So, we need some fresh blood to just kinda get the Board of Ed to realize and understand that we're in a new phase, we need to readjust and we need to try new things. I don't know if you wanna translate.
Lo que Michelle estaba diciendo es que, um, después de COVID, hubo muchos cambios debido a la pandemia. Pero sí va a tomar tiempo para quizás cambiar ciertas, um, o agregar nuevas ide- ideas. Pero necesitamos cambios, y eso va a tomar tiempo, sí. Pero él dice que todo tiene que ser, no solo suspensiones, no solo sacar al niño de la escuela, sino ir internamente adentro de la escuela y abogar por ellos.
New Brunswick's, like, super confusing, 'cause I read their reentry plan in great detail. And, like, there's a lot of beautiful statements there, they cite all the right research, in my opinion. Um, and their focus on social-emotional learning is wonderful. However, they still have their, like, it's really hard to get hold of, but I got hold of it, their discipline handbook or whatever it's called. It's appalling. I don't know how they balance the social-emotional learning with their discipline handbook and also in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions. I'm not sure how that pairs with social-emotional learning either. Would you consider rewriting the disciplinary handbook? What would your approach be to student behavior?
Yeah. I mean, we, we're not gonna be. I mean, we, we're not gonna be able to rewrite the discipline handbook as the minority on, on the school board, so we're, we will be very limited at first, but we can be an advocate for getting that done. And who knows, we may pick up some, some, some other support on the board, or we may get three more people from our ticket elected next year, and then we will be the majority. Yes, I definitely think that's...
What, what does it take to, like, create some waves? Cause I've been to a handful of meetings, and I know, first of all, it's really hard to get space to talk. And then when people talk, it's like, I wrote a letter last year, somebody else read it, cause I couldn't make it, but, like, you know, there's, there's really no acknowledgement of what's being said at all. So it's like, okay, you can have the space to talk, but that's really all it is, it's just space to talk, it doesn't seem to be going anywhere.
If you, if you're gone, they don't really listen when you're talking.
Right, right, so, I'm not sure, like, in your many years around, like, what does it take to poke at some?
I think getting the students' first ticket, this students' first ticket, the three of us on the board, is just us sort of getting our foot in the door, and as we get established, hopefully next year we'll be able to put up three more, like Linda said, and have the majority. And at that point, when we've already been laying the foundation for like our advocacy work, we can then start to really push our policies forward, our goals forward, and act as like the voice of this organization and other community organizations.
Get more parents involved.
Ella pregunta que si, qué sería necesario para, por ejemplo, hacer un, un nuevo código de conducta, de disciplina, que lo que dice el distrito y cuando, eh, eh, lo que tienen en el sitio web sobre el aprendizaje socioemocional y todo, esas cosas, frases bonitas, ¿verdad? Pero luego no combina, hay un desconecte con eso, y que él dice que cuando consiguió ese librito de disciplina, que le fue difícil conseguirlo y cuando lo vio, estaba...
No, eso no tiene nada que ver con, con lo que supuestamente dicen que...
Hi, then, yes, due to where, I pray that you win, and I'm, I'm, the next thing I'm gonna ask you, due to where, that's why I said the Board of Education and the Police Department needs to start working together to, for in-school zones, at a safety outside, due to where, just like I'm fighting for where the new school is gonna go, due to where the, the violence, the drinking, due to where things that you don't want our children to see, due to where, wow, with Redshaw School, Livingston School, due to where, wow, what about a month apart, you had two shelter, two shootings right in the school zone, where the kids had the shelter in place. I, I really think the Board of Education and the Police Department really need to start working definitely before they open up this school over here, due to where drunk men, sexual assaulting, and I will say what I, I worked as a woman, due to where, what what happened to me, where how they, they were grabbing women, and wow, if I had an issue, due to imagine how a child is gonna go, and could please, that's one thing I'm surely gonna be speaking at the meetings, and I'm showing the, the pictures as well. Like I said, my child isn't going there, but I look at, after any child as my own child, due to where the Board of Education and the Police Department need to really start working to start cleaning this area up over here, due to where it's plenty of things you don't want your kids to, to see o- over there. Or, or, and like I said, I'm working on the safety issue as well, but, like I said, please, I hope the Board of Education and Police Department start working together and thinking about the safety of our children around any, any school.
Sure. Ah, lo que ella estaba hablando es sobre la seguridad de la ocasión de las escuelas. Por ejemplo, ella hablaba sobre la nueva escuela que se va a abrir en la Jersey Avenue. Ahm, ella está abogando mucho por seguridad en el área, porque cuando esta escuela abra, ahm, ahora mismo hay mucha, muchos alcoholicos, ahm, viviendo quizás cerca de esa área donde va a estar la nueva escuela. Y si ella ha visto ejemplos donde acosan mucho a las mujeres cuando andan en esa área, ella está preocupada por los estudiantes. Porque ella, aunque sus hijos no vayan a ir a esa escuela, ella se preocupa por los hijos de los demás, porque es como ella dio el ejemplo, es, es como si fuera mi hijo, que lo vayan a tratar mal o querer abusar, porque la zona no es segura para una escuela ahí.
Eso es lo que está pasando, de que no dan transporte. En la Rense, en el Tarse, el año pasado una niña aquí iba caminando, un estudiante, ahí sufrió acoso sexual. Solo dijeron eso, yo no sé, tal vez quisieron usarle ya, no sé qué, qué más pasaría. Pero como siempre, así sea la policía, o sea todo es como una, entre ellos nomás se hacen y ahí quedó, no dijeron si hubo detención o, o algo. Y entonces yo me acuerdo que yo fui a una reunión, igual yo hablé cuando se trató de eso. Eso es lo que pasa porque va, quien hace eso están viendo a los niños que van solos. Si tuvieran transporte, por lo menos dejaran un grupo de niños cerca de donde viven, si no quieren ir o dejar como los niños especiales que van a su casa, ¿dejarlo? Yo creo que eso sería de mucha ayuda. Porque, y ahorita como ella está diciendo, incluso yo la he visto, a ella le han quitado a Nancy Lee Hall sus pruebas que ha llevado, que anduvimos con todo delito en ese año, yo la conozco también ella. Entonces, pero yo desde ahí, o sea yo cuando empecé a ver, a informarme un poquito, entonces yo digo, mi, también mis, mis hijos no están en las escuelas donde yo estoy ahí, qué seguridad. Me dice el comisionado de la policía dos veces, me dijo, tú solamente, todos los hijos, todos los niños que están ahí, ¿son tuyos? Le digo, no, pero tengo, y tal vez posiblemente mi tío to vayan ahí. Tal vez nos haga algo de, de la noche a la mañana, pero si ustedes hacen su trabajo sí se puede hacer algo. Y me decía, ¿otra vez usted señor?, sí señor. Y donde se tenga que hablar del mismo tema de seguridad, yo ahí voy a estar, aunque mis hijos no estén en esa escuela. Porque si, igual ahí donde yo vivía, vivía una señora que tenía tres niños adolescentes. Y ahí, ahora sí que no, no quisiera decir nada, pero hay de esas mujeres de, que andan ahí parándose en las esquinas, eh, no dejaban salir a los muchachos de carro. Le tocaba que le abrieran a ella. Ven, dice ven, o sea, tal vez no en la casa esté pasando algo, como a veces dicen, tanto en la casa y en la escuela no hace su trabajo, pero en la calle hay muchas cosas, ¿por qué?, porque no hacen nada la ciudad. No hacen nada, no hay seguridad, entiendo, o sea, eso no solamente ni en la escuela, ni en mi casa, a veces hay gente que vive con más personas, si usted está cuidando a sus hijos, pero si viven más personas, o sea usted no sabe los, las intenciones de las otras personas. Pero en la calle, ¿qué uno puede hacer? Luego dicen, no, es que la calle es libre, pero no para acosar, hacerle daño a niños, es lo que yo pienso.
And she's agreeing with you regarding the street violence, she advocates a lot about street violence. She's gave an example how she's reached out to the police, and um, they have told her in certain instances that not all of the children in there are her, her children, so she could, um, advocate for them. But regardless of those negative comments she's received from the police, she still goes back. And um, she spoke about how she heard of a student, um, suffering from sexual abuse between Ta- Townsend and Remsen last year, and she advocated for that case too as well. So she says, even though change might take awhile, um, she is not putting her foot down because she wants to keep on advocating, because she knows her children's children are going to attend those schools, and she wants a safer New Brunswick.
And she said also that, um, transportation would be a big help.
Oh, yes.
When you know that kids are gonna have to walk through unsafe, ah...
Honestly, as a person, due to where I prove to the city and the public, I, like I said, dude, that's how I see a lot of things, due to where, how I do have special visions, due to where, even if you saw an article that I just put up on Facebook, someone said, woo, why are you at so many, how, how do you appear at locations, due to where, like I said, I don't follow, and I, I'm the one calling, due to where I prove to the public, the city and county, that's just the Lord working with me. But honestly, the only way I say that's gonna be safe over there, for the, for the kids over there, that's where, when it's time for the kids to go, go to school, at least three police cars and the same thing for when they're released. Because like I said, it's just too many drunk men over there. Like I said, what, honestly, as a grown woman, I'm not scared to go through New Brunswick. Charlie's the witness, the reason why I didn't go, come to the, I was here, I didn't go to the last meeting where I was telling him I'm going to buy me a taser, who would be, due to where, and they said it's legal, but like I said, for a man coming up grabbing me, due to where, then the next night I was running around the house like, wow, where's the man, where's the man, imagine what a little child would go through, would be happening. And like I said, they have to do, it's too much drinking o- 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 over, over there, due to where something is gonna have to be done, and like I say, the only way that I see, that's where the Police Department needs to step up with, starting so soon. And I, I thank you for spe- speaking up the, speaking up the tru- the truth on what, what you see, due to where, like I said, it is very sad for any child to go through that.
I'll just make a, a quick note, um, we can go with the Q and A for maybe ten or fifteen more minutes before...
Okay.
Um, but feel free to translate, I'm sorry.
I just wanna talk about, about bullying. Um, I seen other c- um, teachers not doing nothing about it, and I witnessed one, a girl got hit by a boy, and then there was these girls laughing at them, and it was, it was very, very triggering for me, since I also witnessed bullying. And I think teachers should do more, and I don't know, is, is it something like, like, they just don't care or, I don't know.
I think, um, that, at the, the help for the students in bullying is also, should be also for teachers, right?
Yeah.
I think, um, our student to staff ratio, but then on top of that, is getting them mental help, right, or getting them the right tools for these kind of scenarios, how to act upon them, right? I think funding should also go towards teachers, right, or they getting paid enough, or they getting the right help tool.
And also, do they get supported if they do try and intervene? Or are they made to feel like they're creating a problem by calling attention to?
Um, I think it's such as, but they see it, but they don't do nothing, like, the teachers just like, just about...
They should.
Depends on their contract, what the, what the superintendent is telling them is, well, 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 wow, due to where you saying, how you spoke up about seeing something and what they called you to the office for, for doing the right thing, then that's really how the superintendent is, due to where they don't like the truth to be, the, the right thing to be done and hear the truth.
Also, if I could suggest to you, um, la muchacha está diciendo que ella ah, vio un caso de bullying que también la maestra o el maestro vio y no hizo nada, no dijo nada, no hizo nada. Pero este, you, are you also, so can, you can pursue it.
Anonymously.
Yeah.
I try to, like, I try not to like make it worse.
Right.
Because I don't want her getting, like, kept getting bullied. I don't know, it's just, yes, hard.
Okay, um, so I got a question for, for all three of you, as, um, as, as a team, um, if, if you, if y'all are, are elected to the board, um, what do you see yourselves doing in those next three years?
So, um, we, as a team, chose like three, base, like, I think we all agreed, um, certain, um, like, security.
Right.
The student ratio, um...
Hiring more staff, um, the security issue, and the, um, and the...
And the graduation rates as well.
But we can only advocate at this point, we can't say, oh yeah, we're gonna get in there, and we're gonna do this and that, cause we're three out of nine.
I, I think the big thing is that we're gonna be introducing, I guess, certain quantifiable metrics by which we can start to hold paid staff accountable. Um, because unfortunately, the board as a sense doesn't have that in mind, and they don't seem very interested in that sort of thing. So it is, we, uh, specifically, like, we want to improve the graduation rates, right, increase student-staff ratios, and, uh, improve the mental health of the kids as well, and, um, it's gonna take a lot of work and research, and it's gonna take discussions just like this one with parents and people like you, but I think that together, you know, this team and the community at large, we'll be able to come up with something better than what we've got now.
I'm wondering how, um, your plan for increased security takes into account students' real need for outdoor time? And I have noticed that most of New Brunswick's schools, at least the elementary schools, don't have any green space, um, not a blade of grass on the playground. And I'm wondering how that, how that will factor in to your plan for security?
I think that's a great question. Um, I think that, uh, on that topic does appear as part of, if, if we get elected, I think, um, the whole greenery, I think that's why we also wanna be part of this, because that's something that never really, like, I do see that, but, uh, I think that's something that...
I did hear that they're going to put playgrounds at two of the schools this, next year.
If you, I think, also has like a whole new, like, playground, and then they're, they're actually working on it. But just the green part, I think is just something that, now that you say it, we could also bring it up.
I think, I think my question specific, just to clarify, my question is specifically as it relates to security, because I often feel that when, when there's a commitment to security, there's often like heightened control over the environment, and obviously the outdoor environment is harder to control. As we've discussed, you know, in the streets or out on the playgrounds, um, the, the park right next to Paul Robeson has been a park that parents have generally often avoided due to some of the neighborhood goings on, and so I'm wondering how those kind of, um, biases play into the greater commitment to security? Like, what will that look like when it comes to outdoor time? Is that helpful?
I mean, for me, I can't speak for all three of us, but I can say personally that as much as I do want to, you know, improve staffing levels for security and stuff like that, I don't think the solution is a punitive one. I don't think that we should be treating the kids as if they have already done something wrong. We shouldn't be assuming that the worst of them, we should be providing, we should be taking preventative measures, and we should be getting to the root of all the problems that they're facing. Such as vaping, for example, like vaping and nicotine consumption is a coping mechanism, right? These kids are going through a lot of things that no one in our generation and older has ever gone through. And unfortunately, the adults that are in their lives at this moment don't have all the answers that they need right now. Um, so I think that personally, the idea is that, um, we are learning about these sorts of things and talking with the parents, talking about specific needs that are not filled, or that they see are not filled.
An outdoor setting would definitely change their mentality. I think, um, being outdoor, just taking the, a class outdoor, I think would help their whole mental, you know, whatever they're going through, even for us as adults, just stepping out of our homes or just stepping out of work changes the whole atmosphere. And we would love it to be at that point, that, you know, we'll let our students out more than twenty, thirty minutes, right, add five minutes even to their recess time. Maybe that's gonna change their whole day schedule, that's something we could bring up.
Yeah, I mean, all the newer schools have like an outdoor classroom space, but I've never seen that utilized. Although I will say, I just, I did happen to walk past Paul Robeson, and there was a whole...
New Brick Playground.
Well, no, there was like a whole, it must have been middle school age, I don't know what they were doing, but they were out on the grass, and I was like, wow, that's interesting. It was not recess, it was like something else going on, yeah.
And we have so many parks too, so maybe, you know, to, that, those are ideas that I think we're gonna gravitate from these type of meetings, being part of the Board of Ed. If that's something that we haven't thought of ourselves, you bringing it up now helps us that if a subject like that comes up in, as... You bringing it up now helps us that if a subject like that comes up in as us being part of the Board of Ed. Um as a team, I think we would bring that up. I think that's a great suggestion.
Do we wanna catch up on translation?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Um lo que estaba diciendo la señorita es que, ¿qué pensamos nosotros sobre los estudiantes tomar receso afuera? Si ya la seguridad por dentro está casi no controlada, ya cuando ellos estén en el receso, menos estará controlada. Aunque pongamos ciertos números de seguridad. Entonces lo que estábamos explicando, esa es una buena pregunta y idea, ¿verdad? Porque eso es algo que nosotros, no somos estudiantes en este momento, pero como estaba diciendo en el chat. Después, los problemas que los estudiantes ahora están teniendo, ninguno de nosotros en este cuarto ha tenido, ¿verdad? Porque ellos pasaron como estudiantes el joven, entonces su mente de ellos es muy diferente a nosotros como padres o como personas. Entonces, al ellos salir de su hábitat de clase y salir afuera a tomar receso, les va a ayudar. Entonces, quizás agregando cinco minutos más a sus treinta minutos de receso sería una gran diferencia. Pero como decía Neshad, primero tenemos que enfocarnos en los problemas como los del vaping y todo eso. Para que ellos tengan esa, para que también los maestros y todos los demás tengan esa confianza de dejarlos afuera libres. Y eso también los va a ayudar mentalmente.
Y que deben tener un espacio verde, que que ha visto que.
No hay.
Hay escuelas que no.
No tienen pasto.
Ni un solo.
Hicieran el cambio en Paul Robinson el parque. Ahorita por, anduvimos con eso que votando, recogiendo firmas para que se hiciera el cambio, es lo que están haciendo ya ahorita ya. Y ahí es desde hace varios años, es que eh me ha me ha tratado así el que es el comisionado de la policía. Porque yo siempre hablaba y decía sobre esa escuela específicamente Paul Robinson. Porque en la hora que los niños salían afuera, estaban fumando, o sea con drogas, alcohol y no, y el security, ni sus luces. O un niño de esa escuela fue a aparecer al danta o en el público. Y se vinieron a dar cuenta hasta las seis de la tarde que porque lo hallaron el niño ayer. Entonces, si la escuela no como que no tiene esa seguridad, esa capacidad de tenerlos afuera. Por por falta de personal de seguridad como pues dejar al aire libre, ¿por qué sacan a los niños que necesitan más cuidado todavía?
She spoke about the Paul Robinson school, how um took them so many years to realize that there needed to be some type of safety zone for them to play in the playground. She gave the example one student stepping out through recess and then no one notifying or being noticed of the student missing until six P M.
They found him downtown.
They found him downtown. Like to to back up some of your um question, I think I'm a true believer in grounding. Um I'm not sure most of you have heard of grounding, like you know, when you step outside, you ground your feet to the earth. Um on and it has to be on true grass, right? So I think um those kind of ideas, we need to bring to the table as being part of the Board of Ed. Because you bring ideas from like, you know, different um research, different psychology. Um and grounding is one example, right? That maybe we could bring down to the table and say, hey, try grounding on students, you know. It's been, you know, scientifically identified that it helps reduce stress, it helps reduce so many um traumas. So so it, I think there's so many things that we wanna help in and modernize the school system. Because our students are suffering from something none of us maybe has suffered. Um because remember, they were students during a time of crisis that none of us were students, me.
And we have time for one more question, if anyone has the last question to wrap up. Yeah.
I wanted to ask, um how do you think the school district can increase communication between itself and the immigrant community in New Brunswick? It's a very unique community that doesn't speak English and who works often. How can the district improve the transparency when these parents often don't have the time or motivation to come to meetings like this?
Well, the first thing they could do is record the Board of Education meetings and put it up for people to watch.
And send invitations in the Spanish.
There, yeah, there's live interpretation services that are available at the sc- school board meetings. But I wasn't aware that that's what those headsets perform until very recently. And I think that a lot of the resources that we have in town, like the school board, either they don't want people using them. Or they just do a really bad job of making it known. So hopefully, we'll be able to see those things when we're working more closely in the school board and be able to just like draw attention to like, hey. Can we get a flyer on this? Can we translate this, et cetera, et cetera? Um I think the big thing too is just like, you know, Charlie records all the school board meetings, but you know. There it's not in an official capacity and it's just not in twenty twenty-three as it stands.
And I got a feedback from parents when they use the headset, um no, no, well, no, no. Some of the parts are not being trans- translated. So that's what I got from two parents from the last meeting. So you may be maybe also, you know, try to get that cleared with them. More transparency on the invitations being sent out. And a lot of parents have got a feedback that a lot of parents do not have emails or do not check their emails. So what about a text message, right? What about a call? I mean, we have these Board of Ed meetings once a month, you know, have someone and re- text or read or.
Or a physical newsletter as well.
Or actual paper document, right?
See, that's one thing I I made a point of la- last time. Due to where maybe you can add some of the other pa- pa- parents. Due to where do do any, do they receive any of the t- for the what whatever school their kids are in? Do they receive the text messages of what go- what goes on? I I had made a point of that due to where I don't think that was when COVID was going on. Due to where, like say, if it says uh uh your your child practice a safety issue, fire drill or something. Due to where I'm I'm beginning to wonder, is that for all parents or are they really just sending that to me? Because they know that I'm I'm I I'm an activist, due to where I I I I wouldn't wonder, do do to do to they send them? Do you receive any, if you can ask them, do they receive any of the text messages?
Reciben alertas de las escuelas por mensaje de texto?
No, just would just would self, no, no, I don't think that they, honestly, by due to where certain things that I was putting on Facebook before. I that's a thing I needed, it needs to be brought up. I don't think due to where a lot of parents are receiving the the messages, the alerts that goes through. And I had made a point on Facebook with that of saying what goes on, if going on in in school. Due to where, like I said, a shelter in place or whatever, a medical issue where the kids were on lockdown or something. Due to where it's supposed to go to every, whatever school your child is in. Due to where it's a supposed to be a text message that goes to every parent. But I don't believe that it's being sent out to every parent.
And as well, do you still get alert, like if your if your son is absent, do you get the text message?
Yes.
Do you get it? Because because they they would say, ustedes decían que no reciben el mensaje ya cuando un niño falta.
No, lo que pasa que eh yo no sé usar el correo electrónico.
No, the text or the.
Oh, mi mi hijo cantó toda una semana, ni siquiera una llamada, ni mucho menos mensaje, el texto que no estuvo ahí. Creo que de esa escuela específicamente estaba haciendo así porque la he visto. Ahí van mis nietos y mamás, si llega tarde mi nieta ya, señora, la niña, ¿qué le pasó? Digo, no, so para más allá me están llamando que en la escuela no están mis hijos.
So we have some parents are getting five texts for the same thing and some parents are getting no texts. So I think the idea is that.
Some schools are better at it than others.
Updated their system.
We need to make sure that the things that are being done, that are being done consistently.
Pero como dice la secretaria de la intendente, que están trabajando en esto porque es el sistema que no se ha renovado. Vamos a esperar no sé cuántos años más para que.
Y si hay alguna, bueno, yo en la escuela. Mi niña sí hay psicóloga supuestamente, pero más bien la psicóloga la ocupan para que nos calmen a nosotros y a los niños como que se. Si ellas se culpen de lo que hacen, eso es lo que hace el psicólogo. Y confundir a veces por lo del idioma, bueno, en mi casa, en las cosas que ha pasado, que me han pasado, yo así lo he visto, no.
Um she's heard that there is psychol- there are psychologists in certain schools. And they do work, but they work towards calming down the parents. So they want and not actually dealing with the student problems. And she doesn't feel like it's much help.
Which seats are they making it?
The other candidates are three incumbents and they're all running to keep their seats. It's Dr. Dale Caldwell.
So.
Emma Seawood. And Patricia Verillas.
Uh like the years, years, years older.
Time for Dr. Caldwell to go, you'd think that he was the superintendent, not Dr. Johnston.
Pero ya saben cómo van a trabajar.
So if you know, remember, this is the last day, so if you know anyone, even seniors, if you see, if you know seniors that are eighteen. Um or, you know, new voters, today is the last day to register to vote. And literally takes you five seconds to register online. If you need any help to, you could ask me or ask Charlie, Riches.
Tienen mi teléfono si necesitan ayuda, si saben de alguna persona que tiene, es mayor de dieciocho años, que es ciudadano americano, residente en New Brunswick. Llámeme para poderlo asistirlo, registrarse para las, que hoy es el último día para registrarte.
Tenemos dos, entre pero, como el viernes, el viernes.
Necesitamos mil votos, ya tenemos dos.
Do you have any fly, any flyers or flyers?
Yes, oh, also we need volunteers, right?
Well, do you have any flyers that pass around?
They should have the flyers sent by Friday.
Necesitamos voluntarios para ayudarnos a repartir los flyers.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your for your engagement tonight, thank you to the candidates and the. Thank you for coming.